We're live.
The chair notes the time is six oh five P M and I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. It is September eleventh, two thousand twenty five. My name is Errol Henry, Chair of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We will begin with a roll call the Z B A members. Mister White.
Present.
Mister Meadows.
Present.
Mister Slovener.
Present.
Corm is present. Also present tonight is um Mister Cynthia Williams, Colonel of the Town of Amherst.
Don't forget Mister Offeld, he's there.
I'm here.
Sorry, I thought I called Mister Offeld, Mister Offeld.
I am here indeed. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Slover, Mister Offeld.
We have your back.
Yeah. Pursuant to chapter two of Acts of two thousand twenty five extended through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty seven. The ability of public bodies to meet in a full remote or hybrid manner. This meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so via Zoom or telephone. No in person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and the general welfare of inhabitants of the town of Amherst. One of the most specific elements of the zoning board of appeals is section ten point three eight. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the close of hearing to file a decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there is a twenty day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest a decision with the relevant judicial body in the Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the register of deeds to take effect. On tonight's agenda, we'll have approved the minutes from our last meeting of August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. And we'll have a public hearing on Z B A F Y two thousand twenty six dash zero three sixty five High Street that requests a special permit under section three point three two four one, converted dwelling to convert an open porch to a bedroom in one of the dwelling units. Additionally, the applicant requests modifications under section seven point nine zero to have more than fifty percent of the parking spaces be compact. Parking spaces as allowed by section seven point one oh four for property located on map parcel fourteen B dash ninety, general residence zoning district R G. Before we will have a discussion on the application, we have a general public comment period. We'll discuss any of the business not anticipated within the next forty eight hours. And of course, once we've concluded all the business, we'll adjourn for tonight. We'll get into our first order of business, and that is the approval of the minutes from August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. I have had the opportunity to review the minutes and ask, are there any modifications or notes to be made by any members of this sitting board? With no edits or modifications, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five as submitted.
They're moved?
So it has been moved. Is there a second? It has been moved in second. The vote requires a roll call vote. Mister Slovener?
Yes.
Mister Offeld?
Aye.
Mister White?
Aye.
Mister Meadows?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion to approve the August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five meeting minutes has been approved. Our second order of business tonight is a public hearing on Z B A F Y two thousand twenty six dash zero three of sixty five High Street. Tonight's panel, of course, are the members I'm sitting before us tonight. Before we open the public hearing, does anyone on the panel have anything to declare or disclose? I see no hands raised or heads shaken. So Miss Williams, if you please, can you um add the applicants and anyone representing them to the maiden please?
The applicant and their attorney are present.
Given that they ordered disclosures or declarations, I will open the public hearing and begin by reading into the record the applicant submissions for consideration for tonight's petition. We do have a cover letter dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty five. Um, the eastern elevation, the floor plans as marked final, modification letter of August twelfth, two thousand twenty five, the project application report, the Z B A application for sixty five Hive Street, and um the final site plan, I believe dated July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. And with the exception of the ad, I'm sorry, with the exception of the project application, these are all submitted on August fifteenth, two thousand twenty five. I will note for the record that there are no public comments um as part of the submission. Before we turn to the petitioners, um I know this was before us um quite some time ago, and we didn't have an official site visit um the second time around. But um full disclosure, I had the ability to go by sixty five Hive Street this week. And uh it's a good thing that I did because I do not believe that I was present for the first part um for the first site visit when this first came before us. So I did walk around the property. I saw um where the converted bedroom is scheduled to go. I had the opportunity to review the parking where the applicant is asking for compact parking. Um I also had the ability to see actually a couple cars pull into the parking space while I was there, so that was actually very good to see. Um, again, I was able to walk around the entire property and see what is being asked. Um, I do believe also that Mister Slovener um did. I'm not sure if you want to add anything, Mister Slovener?
No, no, everything. I I went there this week as well to refresh my memory. I was at the first site visit, but I thought that we owed it to the application to go back, so I went back this week and saw everything as it is now. Yes.
Thank you, Mister Slover.
Yep.
So if there is no further discussion about the site visit, I'd like to invite the applicants or the applicant's representatives to present their petition to the board at this time. Um, please be mindful that before you speak, please introduce yourselves and give your address for the record, please.
Got to turn the audio on first. Uh, good evening, everybody. My name is David Burson. I'm an attorney from Legacy Counselors P C. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant sixty five High Street Rentals L L C. Uh, with me tonight is Alec Rovitz, who is the sole member manager of the L L C and owner of the property. Um, additionally with us here tonight, and I'm not sure if he's he's maybe listed as an attendee right now, is um Chaim Edelman, um who is the proposed property manager. So if it's possible to um, you know, add him as a panelist if he's there, that would be great. Um, just in the event that board has specific questions for for Mister Edelman. Um, that being said, um, I'd like to just share my screen quickly if you wouldn't mind giving me a minute. And hold on one second while I. It's hard for me to see what you guys can see on my screen shares. So just bear with me.
Mr. Wallpaper right now?
Just the wallpaper. Okay. Apologies. And I made a PowerPoint hoping it would be easier to see everything and.
That's okay. You're the only app, the only petition tonight, so you have time.
There we go. Okay, is uh do you see a uh a page that just says sixty five High Street special permit under section three point three two four one?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, okay. Um, so um simply put, well, sixty five High Street, uh it's an approximately point four two acre piece of property uh located within the R G zoning district. Um, it currently has a uh two family located on the property uh with two separate units, a three bedroom unit on the first floor and a four bedroom unit list uh located on the second and third floor of that unit or of that building. Um, specifically tonight, um we are seeking permission from this board um uh via special permit under section three point three two four uh to have this property permitted as a converted dwelling. Uh, and we're also seeking to add an additional bedroom on the first floor. And you should see the site plan currently. So this um is the current site plan um as shown, and I do appreciate you taking the time to do a site visit today. It does make uh it a little bit easier to explain what's what's happening on this very convoluted site plan. Um, so despite all of the the business of the site plan, um there are not a whole lot of proposed changes taking place in the exterior. Um, we are um, as was uh mentioned, we are proposing to have uh five parking spots on this property. Uh, three of those located on the eastern edge of the um existing driveway, um and those are located uh one, two, three, right there, located as three, four, and five. Um, those, as was uh was mentioned, we have uh submitted a uh modification request in accordance with section seven point uh one zero four relative to these being compact spaces. Uh, the Amherst zoning bylaw requires that parking spaces be nine feet by eighteen feet uh typically. Um, and these three spaces in particular are actually um eight feet by twenty feet. So they're they're two feet longer than a typical space, but they are one feet. Um, narrower narrower in width. Uh, and then we are proposing two more spots, um both located towards the rear of the property um by the existing garage. Um, additionally, we are also proposing to make some um some minor changes relative to the uh existing lighting. So we are proposing to in yeah install um a new light on the front porch area uh which doesn't let me zoom in and use a laser pointer at the same time. So I apologize, but the uh one light would be proposed here. Uh, another new light would be located at the foot of the existing um uh exterior stair stairwell, which is the primary access for the second floor unit. And then finally, a a light um above the garage for the to illuminate the parking area. Um, all those lights that we're proposing would be dark sky compliant. Um, there are three existing lights located on the stairwell itself that lead up to that second floor unit. Um, additionally, on this plan, we are proposing to remove. Um, you can see that there is something said stairs to be removed over here. Um, so there are some steps that lead up to the porch as it currently exists on that first floor. Uh, and we're proposing to remove those steps. Um, and I'm going to move along just to see some pictures of of what the the property currently looks like. So this is the first and second floor porch as they currently exist. Um, so these are the stairs that we would be proposing to remove. Uh, we would then be uh enclosing uh and encapsulating this first floor unit um to turn this into another bedroom for the first floor. Uh, and then we would further encapsulate and enclose the second floor porch area as well. Uh, primarily just to to effectively uh winterize the first floor unit. Um, you know, if we left this open, it would ca- cause uh issues in the future, just with respect to to weather and and, you know, potentially impact the structural integrity um of this portion of the home. Um, additionally, this is just a a picture. So you can see this is where um the current dining room is that accesses out to that first floor porch. Uh, so this uh window would be covered up, and then this would essentially become a new doorway into that additional bedroom. Uh, and I've also included a picture of the existing stairwell. Um, this is in the interior on the first floor. Um, and one of the things that came up as part of our the application process was essentially just how um the property itself doesn't really have sufficient separation currently between the first floor unit and the second floor unit. Um, so while the second floor unit typically, um, this is a the second floor unit. So while the second floor unit, their primary means of ingress and egress is via the exterior stair stairwell stairwell, um which comes up to the second floor. Um, that first floor stairwell for the for all intents and purposes. Um, currently, and this is the current floor plan as it exists. Um, so currently, when you walk in, you can really essentially walk up to that second floor and access the first floor. So this is obviously a security concern. Um, and one of the comments that we've uh received from the town, which um in the the first time we came before this board. Um, and this is our proposal to address that. So if you see here, this is our proposed first floor plan over here. Uh, what we're proposing to do is fully turn this into a closed off wall. Um, so there wouldn't be a banister here anymore. Um, and then there would be a doorway at the foot of that steps uh of the steps essentially limiting access to that second floor unit. Um, you can also see here, uh we've shown where the existing porch currently is. Um, this is with the bedroom as it would be um post construction. So uh still in the same footprint of that existing porch, um but fully encapsulated so that it's now um protected from the weather. And moving on, so this is also um just showing the second floor unit currently. Um, so this is the second floor unit as it currently exists. Um, the primary change that's taking place here, as we uh previously mentioned, is we're also looking to enclose that second floor porch uh specifically to protect that first floor unit, uh that new bedroom. Uh, you can see this is really just going to be free space. There's no plan here to turn this into anything other than some maybe some potential additional, you know, storage space, what have you. Um, this is a pro, this is the uh elevation, just showing what that um portion of the building. This is the south side of the building, if you're looking at it, and this right here is where that uh porch used to be. Um, and this is what we're proposing. So it would uh the siding would match um the existing siding on site, so it would seamlessly blend in with the remainder of the house. Uh, and similarly, uh this is the elevation, just showing it from the eastern standpoint. So if you're looking from the back of the house forward uh and you can see over here, um this is where the porches would have been enclosed on this side here. Um, and just because it's it's always nice to see um what these things could really look like. Um, so these are some renderings that we've uh put together just showing essentially what that would look like once it's completed, you know, with the siding matching the rest of the house. And then we like to think that it's that it looks quite nice and that it blends in well with the the character of the houses that currently exists. Um, in addition to requesting um the uh inclusion of that or the creation of a first floor bedroom, uh we are also proposing to have a property manager on site for this applicant for this property or not on site, but a property manager associated with this property. Um, Chaim Abelyn, who is here tonight. Um, but essentially, Chaim is going to be the primary point of contact for um both the residents uh in the the uh units itself um as well as for the the town. So um he'd be responsible for making sure that the trash and recycling is picked up when it's supposed to be picked up, um which is supposed to be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, that landscape maintenance is a occurs when needed, watering, mowing, pruning, leaf pickup, seasonal care um as well as snow removal when when necessary. Um, the, you know, if there were any intertenant disputes or neighbor disputes, um uh Chaim would be the primary point of contact, and he would notify the property owner as well as the town if need be. Um, this application, um, you know, and after speaking with uh with the town, um, the application itself or for this building, um could have gone a number of different ways, but um we felt that it was much more appropriate for this building to be classified as a converted dwelling unit as opposed to a two family, which is how the um town in previous applications has has kind of um treated this property. Uh, primarily because the uh idea behind a a two family or a duplex is that it's built to be a two family or duplex. Whereas the converted dwelling statute or bylaw is really specific to properties which used to be one single family homes, which were then converted into multifamily dwellings, uh which is obviously the case here. Uh, so this property um was built in the eighteen seventies. Um, to the best of our knowledge, it looks like it was converted sometime in the late sixties into a multifamily unit um and has been utilized as such since the nineteen sixties. Um, so that being said, I'm happy to answer any specific questions that the board may have, but um generally speaking, that is what we are seeking from this board.
Thank you um for your presentation. I I will, um, you you didn't touch much on the parking. Did is there anything you wanted to add to the parking? I didn't. I don't remember if I heard much about what you're, is it going to be paved parking, unpaved parking?
Yeah, so the the parking, we're not making any changes to the existing parking, so it's currently um gravel parking. Um, and our proposal is to to keep it gravel. In fact, um prior to this application, the um uh we had come before this board once before, um and the driveway had actually been too narrow um in its previous iteration to house um three additional cars where they were located. Um, and as part of the, you know, just getting ready for this process, um um Alec and his general contractor actually expanded the parking area um consistent with the, you know, our previous proposal um to allow for a sufficient space for those cars um as well as um ingress and egress for those um to the um the east of the parking spaces. Um, additionally, I know that there was a comment in the application report regarding the size of the um parking spots in front of the garage. Um, so those are both compliance spots. Um, space parking space number one uh would be nine by eighteen, which is, you know, right on the money for what the town is looking for parking spaces. Uh, and space number two would be um eleven by eighteen, so even larger.
If I'm remembering correctly, um the last time, um this was before us, we'd ask questions about the standing garage that is there. Um, can you address that, please? Um, and we were told that it needs some cleaning out. That's why additional parking spaces were needed and needed some time. What has happened with that space since this time?
Sure. So my understanding that it's it's actually even even worse than just, I mean, it certainly needs a clean out. Um, but it's actually even worse. I believe there's actually um built in structures which limit the use of that garage. Um, there's like a uh, I don't want to say a false wall because I think it's an actual wall. I think Alec can speak to that, but um ultimately, the the garage is is effectively unusable unless there's been, you know, sufficient construction which occurs in the interior of the garage. And I think there's also some concerns about the actual structural integrity of the garage itself uh and the, you know, whether it's actually safe to to put cars in there uh for tenants.
Yeah, I could I could chime in. Um, that's correct. Before us at the the last meeting was my general contractor, um Jeff, um Jeff had raised concerns about the structural int- integrity of the garage, and so just in consultation with David, we figured it would be just completely safe just to avoid the garage until we could figure out kind of how safe it is and what needs to be repaired um in some timely fashion this year.
I I think partly, oh, sorry.
That's okay. But if I'm understanding correctly, your contractor is saying that it is not safe currently.
Correct.
So why not? If it's not safe and it is hindering parking, why not demolish that and use that space for parking?
I simply, I I don't have the funds, how he priced it, um to maybe build another enclosed garage and or just pave the entire driveway, um which is something that I would want to do if I was going to knock that down. Um, and so I I think just between myself and Jeff, that's something that we're going to tackle this year. Um, making that either structure safe and or again knocking it down.
So I I I'm not suggesting, you know, knock me down and build or pave parking, but you're asking for to make compact parking. And when I walked there, um if if you get what you're asking for, how how do you envision the cars, you know, getting in and getting out? Because, you know, if there is cars to the left and then these additional cars close to the house, um no one can turn around. So what is what what is that plan? Because if you drive towards the back, um there is that garage there. Um, so just just help me understand how you envision this tandem parking working.
Um, I I simply envision the parking working where people pull in and simply just back out. There is a garage bay that was an extension to that garage um that was added on after it was originally built. So you have the main horse carriage garage section, and then to your left, you have an additional bay. That additional bay without the lofted section above head, um Jeff does believe is structurally sound. Um, and I if necessary, um I will uh put a car in there just to open up the space and allow for cars to turn around. But for the purposes of just me doing my diligence, I haven't done that diligence with Jeff to say, okay, we're completely okay with this bay and we're going to put a car in there. Um, i- it's just been in order of operations. Jeff right now is away. Um, and it's it's a problem we're going to tackle in in the fall.
Uh, there's there's one other thing I also would note. And this is just about the the structure generally, and I'm quite frankly, I'm not sure if it applies to the garage, but um the property itself is technically a um on the historic register. Um, so it's possible that the, you know, removal or destruction of the even just the garage would require um approval and oversight by the historical commission.
So you guys did not look into that is what you're saying?
Not at this time.
I I looked at the management plan and one of the things that's on there um is, you know, taking care of the property, um vegetation, cutting grass and things like that. And when I was there on Tuesday, um it did not appear that you had that done recently.
Yes, yeah, it's actually scheduled. I actually have someone coming this upcoming week. Um, I I have been away and it was recently yeah, so a friend in the area had notified me that things had grown a little little higher and taller than uh which which should be currently existing there. Uh, and I promptly scheduled a landscape company to come and take care of the property.
I I reserve the rest of my questions for later and give the board um opportunities to ask their questions. And I see Mister Meadows has his hand up.
Um, thi- this is the third time that this building has come in front of the board since I've been on the board. Um, the first time it was rejected uh because of the the um intermingling of the different apartments which you've uh resolved with the stairs. Um, the only thing about that is does that leave, where where are the are the two egresses? Is it the front stairs and the and the backside stair? The north side stairs?
So if we're looking at the site plan, um there's okay, here we go. Um, so there is one set of stairwell. Can you actually see the the mouse here? I I you know, would put the I would put the laser pointer up, but then it would just shrink the the image again. Um, so there's one egress um for the second floor unit, um which is here. So there's the exterior stairwell. Um, and this is the primary main, um, you know, entryway for that second floor unit. Um, and then there's another um ingress egress here at the front door, right here.
Okay. Um, I didn't see comments from the fire department. Were there any? And I I I ask about that because where you have the, there was concern in one of the requests for this building by the fire department of the parking adjacent to the building where you have which you have labeled as three, four, and five. Was that, did the fire department have the ability to look at this yet?
That was shared with everyone um in the town, Mister Meadows, and I haven't received any feedback regarding this iteration of the application for sixty five High Street from the fire department, but I can reach out to them if you'd like.
Please. Because there was some concern both with the width of the of the driveway and with the parking adjacent to the building in one of one of the iterations that we've seen.
Yeah, it it definitely wasn't the last one uh with us, if only because I I would have remembered, uh, you know, that that specific request.
And I had a third question, but I don't remember what it is now, so I'll hold off until I can.
Um, it's as far as and and, you know, once again, we're not looking to to change what's proposed before you right now, obviously. Um, but as far as the, you know, and we invite any comments from the fire department. Um, but as far as the, you know, location of those parking spots, you know, if push came to shove, um, you know, we likely could move those spots to the other side of the driveway. Um, this is just how it's um been laid out by um by us and and by Randy Eizer, so. This is just how it's been laid out by by us and by Randy Eizer, so.
Mr. Offeld?
Yes, I'm glad to see the applicant addressing the issue of the separation of the two residential units. But I I have a few questions about that, so if you might pull up the floor plans, I could. Basically, I'd like to just understand. Exactly, how the 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 upper unit, the second and third floor unit. But for the first floor unit. Yeah, maybe we could. So you've got up there.
Yeah, would you prefer I have the first floor or the the second and third floor?
First, yeah, the first floor, please.
Sure.
Front door. Or in the upper unit, the second floor unit, you would get an immediate right. Is that door locked at the base of the stairs? Would that be a locking?
That that wouldn't be a locking door, the proposed addition.
I'm not sure if it's, I'm not sure if it's me or Mr. Offeld is going in and out.
Yeah, no, I'm hearing it as well, I I wasn't sure.
I'm sorry. I may have a shaky connection. Okay, I'm I'm again entering through the front door and going down the hallway. On the left is a door to a bedroom. And I wonder if that's locked. Locked and then there's another door into that, into the first floor unit. Is that? Locked, unit to the other. Being controlled by appropriate locks.
I I'm not sure if I'm the only one who's having difficulty hearing a board member off field, but. He's going in and out for me.
Yeah, Alec, I I can, I mean, if it's okay, I think I can I can sum up the question, because this is something that we. Discussed the last time we were before this board, which is the essentially the. The practically how these, for instance, the door in the bedroom shown on the first floor, right outside the hallway. Whether or not that's going to be accessible from that hallway. Same thing for the door at the end of the hallway in the first floor, as to how how that will work, and then finally the door. You know, also going to that second floor unit from the stairwell.
Sure. So the door leading to the bedroom has a knob and a lock and is accessible only from the interior on the first unit. It will not, there will be no access given to enter into that bedroom from that hallway. The door leading into the living room of the first unit. It there's a deadbolt, there's a lock, it's a fire door, and the same would be applicable to the door at the bottom of the steps. So there's full security between the first and the second unit as soon as you enter into that vestibule hallway area.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I just wanted to refer back to your management plan, just based off the conversation you that we were just having. In the management plan that you submitted specifically about grass, it states watering of plants and grass will occur as needed during warmer months. Typically between April and September, depending on weather conditions, no issue with that. Fertilizing will be performed twice annually in the spring and the fall, mowing will take place weekly. During the grows growing season, which is from April to October. So given the comment from the chair a few moments ago, my question for you is when it comes to this mowing, which you've included in your management plan. Do you have anyone under contract since you're stipulating that it will be done weekly?
So so I I did actually have a landscape company that I had under contract, they weren't coming regularly. And during the summer months I was traveling, hence my. Availability to actually see that there was overgrowth. I currently I have Ethan's Eden Landscaping coming. And I'm going to have them under contract during the growing season to come weekly. Or or at least at the very least trim and make sure everything is maintained.
So when when you were before us, Mr. Rovitz, you know, this was, you know, owner occupied. And now you're doing with a resident manager, what prompted the change?
Then the reason we came before you with the owner occupancy lift was because my work, I I could periodically travel. And my main concern was when I am traveling, I I'm not on property. And after discussion with David and the town and in meeting with the town, we figured it would be best just to elect. A property manager, so regardless of whether I am traveling or not, we could attenuate all concerns and and actively manage the property. Unfortunately, I I just have such a sporadic travel schedule that it it was a main concern of mine. And Chaim has kindly agreed to manage the property. And and so that's why we had removed the owner occupancy lift this time around.
So what what is the, what would be the makeup here? You know, with with four bedrooms on first floors and second floor, what what do you envision? What is your current tenant makeup and what do you envision this will be once if this is approved?
Uh, well, I I spend almost all of my time in Amherst and so. I envision myself still residing on the property. And once approved, I I just want the ability within eight months for me to say. Okay, I have to travel and Chaim could actively manage the property for me as I'm I'm not in Amherst.
In addition to, in addition to a resident manager as well, I I want to be clear there, it would not just be Chaim, there would also be a resident manager as well. At the property.
So is is your resident manager an active tenant? Is that the plan?
That would be the plan, but there is there is no current resident manager because Alec is living there.
No, no, I I I understand that, but.
Yes, that is, that is the proposal.
Okay, and the property now as it stands, is it fully occupied? I mean, there are a lot of cars there when I was there.
Yeah, I I have one unit occupied, I I reside in the other unit.
So the the current makeup is not like it's, it looks like college students, so that's your tenants right now, it's like different college students in each unit?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. Mr. Slobodar?
Okay, I have a bunch of questions here, I've been taking notes. In a number of different areas, first, I just want to confirm that the second and third floor units are. The second and third floor are one unit, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It strikes me that this is a rather intense use of the property, so I'm concerned about a number of aspects of that. There are. Well, let me, let me start with parking. There are eight bedrooms in, if if you get approval, there will be eight bedrooms, presumably that's eight people. You only will have space for five cars. And does that mean that if somebody wants to live there and has and has the sixth or seventh car? They will not be able. You will, they will be turned away.
That's correct, so there's currently baked into the leases the ability, each unit would only have the ability to have two cars per unit. And the tenants would have to figure out amongst themselves as to who could have a car. But the landlord's only going to allow two per unit with one additional spot for visitor parking and, you know, and whatnot.
There were five cars there the other day when I was there, so that presumes.
David, I I could actually chime in, so when you were there, I I do have exterior cameras for security. There there was a contractor at the house, there there was an electrician fixing things, and I'm not sure who he brought with him. But presumably that would be the additional car. Same same thing today, I I I do believe that someone walked the property today as well. Again, there there was a plumber at the house as well. There there were several maintenance issues that myself and Chaim were coordinating on. That necessitated more than the required amount of cars in our parking plan.
And three of the spaces, the ones along the driveway will be compact cars. And how will you deal with? A a tenant who within the car limit, but the car is not a compact car, then what happens?
So actually, that was addressed to me this past week while I was away. By a friend, because David and I have been actively discussing kind of how to manage the property in conjunction with Chaim. There was a situation where there was an SUV and a compact car spot. When I get back to the property after my little trip that I'm on. I'm going to address that with the tenants and and I'm going to make sure that tenant spots are allocated. For a specific tenant vehicle, so that way people could safely maneuver in and out of the driveway.
So if somebody applies to live in this building and their car is too big, they would be turned away, or is that, are you? Is that something you're maintaining you will do?
Or they couldn't bring their car, I mean, I I can't speak for for Alec, but I, you know, generally speaking. There are plenty of. Plenty of apartments and residential units where, you know. Hey, you you can't have a car or you have to pay extra or you're limited into the type of vehicle that you can utilize at that location.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just broadly speak, whatever is necessary to maintain compliance and safety on the property is what I'm gonna do. Above all else.
Okay, but that, all right. Are you going to be renting these units by the unit or by the bedroom?
By by the unit.
So you're going to rent, you're going to have. One person or a. A self identified group of people rent the four bedroom unit. You're not going to rent the bedrooms individually?
That's correct.
Okay, so you you said that you are living there now, is, did you, did you say that?
That's correct.
And in which unit are you living?
The first floor unit.
And the second floor unit is rented to four other people presumably?
That is correct.
So how, how do you plan to have a resident manager who I? Believe will not be Mr. Edelman, it will be somebody who lives in there. And will the resident manager be connected to the other three people and be one of the group? That rents the first floor as. As the a unit and then one of them will be the resident manager, how are you going to identify the resident manager? That with a sufficient amount of independence from the other, the other people living in the apartment.
So I can I can address that, Alec, if that's okay. So our proposal right now is, and we don't have a plan to change it as of right now, but our proposal is to have, so there would be two leases. There'd be obviously a lease for the second and third floor unit for those four people. There'd be a lease on the first floor unit for three individuals, because the understanding is currently Alec is living in one of those. Those bedrooms or will be living in one of those bedrooms, so there would be one. One bedroom for that first floor unit that would have its own separate lease. And the idea is that the person who takes over Alex's location would be the resident manager. So separate from the the three other individuals renting that first floor unit.
So, but you're not going to be renting it by the room, you'll be renting only. You'll be renting the resident manager's room.
One room, correct.
To the resident manager.
Correct.
Who will then. Be asked to live with three people that he or she doesn't know and share. The apartment, is that correct?
Potentially.
Yes.
That's a bit of, okay, it's a bit of a reach, I think, but.
I I just, I think from my understanding of how that's feasible, there are a lot of. Very mature graduate students and and people whom Chaim and I could agree would be a a very responsible party. And or a a local Amherst community member who needs housing that we see fit that could make this feasible for us.
And where where will Mr. Edelman be living? As a property manager, where where does he live now and where will he live then or is he moving? What will his distance from the property be?
I live in Hadley and I work in Amherst.
Okay. And. Is the applicant going to have a contract with Mr. Edelman as the property manager and if so, for how long?
Mr. Edelman and I will have a signed agreement, the duration of time, I think will be. On a twelve to twenty-four month interval.
Okay, I noticed on the floor plan that was submitted before the one I've been looking at. There is, I believe, a washer and dryer at the back of the second floor. Unit, on the second floor at the back of that unit, there's a little alcove that says WD, I I'm presuming that's washer dryer. I can't believe it means window dressing. Is that, is that a washer dryer?
David, can you, oh, there it is. Um, I believe that that's what, it, yeah, I'm not the person who put the floor plans together, but I believe that's what it represents.
Okay, I'm I'm looking actually on the one that was submitted, it's that's clearer, it definitely says WD. There, and how about on the first floor, there's a washer dryer for the upper unit but not on the first floor? Or at least I don't see it drawn in there.
Yeah, so there is a washer dryer, it's located in the basement in which the first unit has access to through the interior.
Ah, okay, and the second floor does not have use of a basement?
That's correct.
Okay. How do you propose to handle? Snow plowing and snow removal on such a tight property with. A narrow driveway that is limited only to compact cars and the site plan. Has one car angle to the right and one straight ahead. I'm glad I'm not in the snow plowing business and this property is one of my customers.
Yeah, I actually, a learning curve this year, as I moved in. The property, the gravel, if if there was a plow to actually plow the snow, they would rip the gravel up. I learned that in November of this past year, which was a shock to me as a new homeowner. But I I've been able to get through the winter months with. Literally hand shovels and the the plan would be to hand shovel the driveway and appropriately lay ice melt. Whenever necessary on all the spots, that has done the trick and I haven't had any difficulty. With like black ice on the driveway or any cars ever getting stuck.
Mr. Slobodar, permit me to ask one question, so you're saying that snow removal will will be the responsibility of the property manager? Or the resident manager?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, you better get a weight lifter. Or a lineman for the UMass football team, because that's a lot of driveway and a lot of shoveling.
It's it's actually not as bad as you think when there are cars there. I I got like the shovels with like the, so you don't have to like bend your back, they have like the grip on like. I, I got like the shovels with like the, so you don't have to like bend your back, they have like the grip on like the down stem of the shovel. I don't know if you've seen those, but they help.
Might be worth getting a, a blower.
Yeah, that too, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, uh, those are all the, my questions for the moment. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, David.
So. Go, going back to, I, I, I'm, I'm still, you know, struggling with the. The unsafe structure that is, is on the property and. I, I appreciate that to your, what you're trying to do with the existing, um, structure. But it, it, it just seems to me to make sense that, you know, if you have this. And, and again, I appreciate that you said you have to check with historical registry before doing anything. Um, if that's the case for the garage, um. You know, have you guys considered that for the main structure as well?
Considered what?
Um, that this property is listed the historical commission, can you, can you do what you're asking to do?
Yeah, so the historic, unless you're within the, you know, design review overlay uh, in town. Um, the, essentially the limit of the historical commission's uh, review has to do with whether you're demolishing. Or raising a structure, um, in which case you need to go through their process in order to demolish or raise a structure that's on the. Um, you know, listed in the registry. Um, so there, you know, what we're proposing here wouldn't be within their purview. Um, because we're not located within that overlay district.
Thank you for that. And, and going back to the parking, so. The, the goal here is to have five parking spaces. Um, is one of those five for a guest or what was, I'm, I want to make sure I understood correctly?
Yeah, so um, each unit requires per the bylaw, two parking spaces, um, just, that's the, the underlying requirement. Uh, we wanted at least, at least five, um, you know, we, we spent a lot of time looking at this site with. Um, with Randy Iser, our surveyor, and obviously Alec and our general contractor, just trying to figure out how we could get more spots here. Because we would much rather have, you know, six or, or eight parking spots. And you know, and if you go to the site and you actually look at the driveway and, and the parking, you probably think, oh, you could fit a whole ton of cars here. But when you start actually, you know, putting the, you know, the measured spots on the surveyed plan. Um, you find out that you run out of space relatively quickly. Um, that's part of why we, we expanded, I think by about eight, I mean, it's like four feet, or was it eight feet? We had to expand the actual um, width of the driveway. Ju- just to even be able to fit, um, three spots on the driveway, um, as they're currently located.
So going back to the, the proposed makeup of the residence here, so. And, and, and I, and, and I know you said, you know, it's unit one, unit two. But from this explanation today, um, it is more likely than not that the first floor. Um, technically, and would be two units because the resident manager would. Essentially sounds like they're gonna be independent from whomever rents the first floor. What happens if that resident manager has their own vehicle? Um, your, your five spots are gone. If second floor gets two, first floor gets two, and now first floor is technically now. Um, two separate units with a resident manager, you don't have a guest parking anymore.
Um, well, just for a quick point of clarity, it would still just be um, one individual dwelling in it. Because they share all their primary facilities.
I, 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 I just have the legal part.
Just, just to clarify that, yeah, just to clarify that one part. Um, as far as the parking is concerned, um, that is a very good question.
I, I think our thought process, David, and I, I wish Jeff was here and available to attend the meeting, but. Um, we, we are actively doing diligence on whether the uh, garage bay that was added onto the horse carriage garage. Is safe. Um, and assuming that is safe, I, I, I think in, uh, with David's help, w- we would be amending. The parking plan, um, but i- it was just merely a function of time and how quickly and, and. You know, thoroughly, we could do our diligence to make sure that we could get a car in that garage bay. And we could amend the parking plan for an additional spot.
I, I do want to thank you all for your presentation. Um, is there anything else, um, you want to add? And? Are, are there any additional questions from, um, our board members? I see Mr. Offeld's hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Offeld.
Okay, um, I've turned off my video to try to conserve bandwidth. Um, just a question on the parking again. Um, I assume the, the driveway has to be twelve feet wide, is that why you want, need to shrink from nine to eight feet wide for the parking spots?
So you need at least twelve feet of clearance between the edge of the parking spot and the edge of the driveway?
Okay, and the driveway cannot be extended further, made wider still? Is that not possible?
It's, I mean, so if you look at the site plan and I, if it's.
I, I believe the neighbors' properties.
That's about, I was gonna put the, the site plan again, it's, it's pretty narrow between the edge of the driveway, hold on one second. So it, it gets pretty narrow, um, in this area of the driveway. So while, you know, it's possible, we, we might be able to, you know, sneak another foot or foot and a half. Maybe even two, um, on that, I believe it would be the, the north early side of that driveway. Um, it's, it still wouldn't provide us any, you know, additional parking, so to speak. Um, just based on the, the required width of that, of that driveway area.
Good, thank you.
Hey, um, Attorney Burson and Ms. Robits, thank you very much, um.
Thank, thank you all very much. We, we really do appreciate you taking the time to consider this and. Uh, we certainly got a lot of, of really good feedback the first time around with this application, so we do appreciate it. Um, and we think that, you know, a lot of this makes sense, you know, I, obviously we're asking for an additional bedroom, but. Uh, we think those changes to the interior of the structure will make a big difference, um, for the tenants in both units. Um, and we thank you for the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I will take comments from the public, um, please remember that there is a maximum speaking time of three minutes per person. Um, Ms. Williams, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? If there are any members of the public here on Zoom, please raise your hand and you will provide an opportunity for you to speak. If you are calling in via the telephone, I believe it is star nine to be recognized.
Hey, Frederick Hartwell will be joining us shortly.
Thank you. She does recognize Mr. Hartfeld, um, just please identify yourself with her address, um.
Yeah, Fred Hartwell at sixty North Whitney Street, uh. I, uh, abut the property on the rear. And, uh. I'm just curious, uh, uh, ask David, I guess, uh, whether, uh. Anything has been done to correct the property description, uh, which is. Uh, a, a complete basket case, it, uh, it actually purports to convey. Two entirely separate parcels, one at sixty-five High Street and the other on North Whitney Street. Uh, on the other side of Clifton Avenue and, uh. Yeah, I just, uh, I'm, I'm curious about that, that's ever gonna get fixed.
Yeah, if I.
I did, I did share the analysis with Mr. Burson earlier.
Um, so i- if I may, uh, address Mr. Hartwell directly, I know that's technically not the appropriate procedure here, but. Um, just a little.
If you don't mind Attorney Burson, let's just wait, um, because we don't, we don't want to have a back and forth.
Sure, sure.
Ms. Williams, is there anyone else in the public?
No, there isn't. Mr. Hartwell is the only person.
Thank you. Um, in, in that case then, Attorney Burson, I, I will give it an opportunity to respond however, Mr. Hartwell. Um, we do not want to have a back and forth, so just, um. We're gonna allow Ms. Attorney Burson to respond and then we're gonna move on.
Um, thank you very much, Chair. Um, so I, just a little backstory for this board. Um, Mr. Hartwell, who obviously identified himself as in a butter, um, was kind enough to bring a title issue to our attentions, uh, which is not. Exactly germane to this application, but it is certainly relevant to our property as a whole. Um, so we really do appreciate the fact that he brought that to our attention. We actually have filed a claim. Or my client has filed a claim with his title insurance company, um, so our hope is that they will, you know, resolve this underlying title issue. Um, obviously, that's, that's why people carry title insurance because they, you know, there's a. Specifically to correct title issues that crop up on your property after you find out, um, as an owner that you've got title issues, so. Uh, we do appreciate Mr. Hartwell bring that to our attention and we are diligently trying to resolve the underlying title issue and I know it's been. Outstanding for a long time, um, and I believe it's been probably bothering. Uh, Mr. Hartwell for a long time, being the only one who seems to know or care about this, but. Uh, no, we have, we've taken steps to address this, uh, this underlying title issue.
Thank you, um, for the clarification, Attorney Burson. So, unless there's any further questions or any comments from the applicant, I would. Um, entertain a motion to move to the public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. So that we can discuss our findings and any conditions where applicable. So, um, do I have such a motion to move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and second, is there any discussion? Thank you. Um, seeing that there is no discussion, um, the vote occurs on the motion to move into a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. Um, Mrs. Slobodar?
Aye.
Mr. Offeld? Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
And the true vote's aye. Um, we are now in public meeting, this is not an opportunity for the applicants, um, or anyone to offer any input. This is where the board, um, discussed the merits of the application. As well as whether or not to, um, make any, to, on findings as well as. Um, conditions and whether or not we are going to approve this. Um, so I will, um, open up the floor to members of the board, um, who wish to. Offer feedback on this. Mr. Offeld, are you speaking? I see you're in green.
I did not intend to do that.
Um, that's, that's okay. So I, um, Mr. Meadows, go ahead.
My general feeling. Is that this petition is a bit premature. I don't think that everything has been thought out as well as it should, and I would also appreciate hearing from the fire department. Regarding the circumstances of the parking. And the exit and entrance to those part, that parking area, area and how. Um, how a fire truck would get in. And exit from there, and from there if it was necessary for the, for a fire truck to get into the property. So I, I, again, I just feel that this is, the, this petition is premature.
Um, thank you, Mr. Meadows. Mrs. Slobodar?
I am concerned about a number of aspects of this petition, I'm not. Mr. Meadows may be correct if the word is premature, I'm not convinced that this is fully. Thought out and, and that the applicant is prepared for as many contingencies, contingencies as I would like to see. I'm concerned about the re- the resident manager and the selection of the resident manager. Uh, a statement that we, you know, intending to find a mature graduate student. Is not to me an insurance, it's an intention and hopes and intentions. Don't strike me as a sufficient commitment. Uh, the applicant also said that he's doing diligence about. The newest parking spot in the garage. And if he's doing diligence, I think he should bring the results of that to the application. Rather than suggest that we should take any future use. Of that garage bay as a way of making the parking situation better, simply on, on good faith. So, I would have a difficult time voting to approve it tonight as the application stands now. I would want to see. Fairly strict conditions on the selection of the resident manager. How it would be identified, how, how the resident manager would be selected. Uh, and. Yeah, so the, I mean, the, the snow. A snow shovel, I may, the snowstorm after I get my car out, or I may walk over and. Watch the applicant shovel his driveway just for entertainment. But, uh, so I'll, I'll let the snow removal go, but the, the. Non-snow-related resident manager is a concern to me. Uh, so there, there are some aspects of this that I think need further clarification. And as a result, I would have a, I'm not, I'm not, uh. I'm not certain of a no vote ultimately, but tonight I'm pretty unsure about a yes vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Slobodar. And, and I would add to, um, the concerns about not hearing from. Um, fire, and of course you heard all my questions around the structure. And the mere fact that you say it was deemed unsafe, um, with no solid plan as to how to handle that. I am in the same vein as Mrs. Slobodar. Um, not comfortable supporting this tonight as, as there are too many unknowns. And I do believe that, um, you have, um, there are good intentions. But there needs to be some definitive as to what is going to happen. As opposed to, you know, good intentions as Mrs. Slobodar say. Um, yes, um, I appreciate, you know, trying to. Um, be mindful that you may not be there and therefore go on, on the avenue of a resident manager. But the living situation with a complete unknown third party, that could create. Issues that could lead to, um, complaints, which is part of our. Conditions here is looking at complaints, um, at properties. Um, so yes, there is that piece of it as well, um, trying to have an unknown, um, party. Cause let's be very frank, if you're renting to college kids, there's a likelihood that these kids will know each other at some point. And now to just introduce them to a third unknown party and say, okay, this person is gonna live with you guys, that seems problematic and could be problematic. Um, and so I have concerns about that, um. There is no way you're gonna remove snow with a shovel, um, let's just be very frank, especially with gravel. Um, it's, it's not going to work and I have, and I hear you that you were away and therefore the property wasn't cared for. But I had a hard time walking into your backyard when I was there on Tuesday. Um, I, so yes, um, there has to be a property manager. Um, before I would even support this because of what I've seen. um, before I would even support this because of what I've seen. And if you're not sure as to what's that gonna be, how that's gonna be, then I'm not comfortable supporting that right now. But again, more than anything, um, the unsafe structure, it is, is not inconceivable to think that there will be people out there doing beer pong, even if it's just two or three of them. Um, just hanging out in the backyard in an unsafe structure. Um, that is an issue for you, that'll be an issue for the town, and so that has to be addressed. I hear you that your contractor is, um, away and will be looking at that when they get back. I won't support anything until we have those definitive answers. Can I use my time to Mr. White and Mr. Offeld?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would echo what I think pretty much everyone else on the board has said. Kind of a, there just seems to be, to me, a lot of maybes kind of still before us, and the way that I always look at my position on the zoning board appeals is I operate in my personal life off of a good faith basis on a regular basis. However, when I am serving in the capacity on board, we can't do that. We need things laid out, we need to see what it's going to be. Uh, and just, it just doesn't feel like it's ready to go to me. There's just several issues that I see, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Offeld?
Yes, thank you. I see a, a number of different issues raised in this, uh, proposal, this application, and I, I thought I'd just step through them and give my, my thoughts on them. One of them is the, is the transition to an owner occupied, I'm, I'm sorry, to a converted dwelling. And the some, somewhat, and the change in requirements associated with that. And I share the same concerns that, uh, Mr. Slovater expressed about uh, the resident manager. I, I'm not sure where I got this impression, but I thought Mr. um, Adelman was going to be the resident, resident manager as well as the pro- uh, property manager. So I, I'm not too happy with that, uh, and would like some clarification on that. The parking, subject to the concerns that, um, Mr. uh, Meadows raised, uh, I think I'm okay on the parking. I'm inclined to support that. Uh, I'm very pleased to see the separation of units. This was raised apparently two or three years ago by the town as a, as a problem, and, um, it, it would be great to see the applicant move forward with this. Uh, it would, i- if, if we're getting fire involved, it would be nice for, for, uh, far department to confirm that the egresses work, doors swing in the right what direction and things like that for, uh, having two, uh, functional egresses from both, uh, units. And the addition of the bedroom seems, I'm inclined to think that's a reasonable thing. Um, so that, that's kind of my rundown on the individual pieces, and I, I guess the management plan and response plan are, are also a, a piece sort of of the converted dwelling part and, uh, yeah, others have mentioned some clarifications that are needed there, so that's where I am right now. And, uh, a- at least the fire input and some, and the other items that, uh, other, other members of the board have mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Offeld, and she recognizes Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add in listening to the conversation tonight. Um, from staff's point of view, what we would need from the applicant based on the conversation tonight would be an updated site plan. Um, the nine by eighteen and the eleven by eighteen parking spaces that were mentioned, they're not on the site plan. And, you know, I would need to see that just so that we have an accurate record of the parking plan. Um, notwithstanding any changes or, you know, plans for the left side of the garage that is functioning. Um, I would also request an updated management plan that accurately lists Ethan's landscaping as the new landscaper. It would be nice to see what the arrangement is. Um, moving forward with Ethan's landscaping, and it would also be nice to see the reflection of the resident manager, I believe is the one who's gonna be shoveling the snow, so that needs to be reflected in the management plan as well. And then third, I believe I heard there is a separate lease for the resident manager. So I would need to see a copy of that lease as well, in addition to the lease agreement for all the other tenants, so just from staff's point of view, technically, this application it's, it needs a little bit more, um, documentation in order to, um, yeah, in order to, yeah, be fulfilled, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I, I know we've all said, um, well, once, but are there any other members of the board who wishes to add anything, or do you think we've said sufficient? So to that end, um, I don't see any hands, um, I, I, I think as a board, we try not to deny and say no without given opportunities. And I think this would be, for this board, a second opportunity, because we, I think we did so the last time. When, um, we afforded the petition to withdraw and go back and came back, and they came back with a completely different application. So, um, and with the board's permission, of course, you know, I'm comfortable continuing this to a date certain. Um, to give, um, the applicant an opportunity to provide those documents to town staff, answer all of our questions and our concerns with the key word there being, answer all of them. Not just some of them. Um, because there is a more likelihood than not, that if those condition, if those issues are not resolved, then you won't get a date certain, you, you will just get an up or down vote, and the vote might end up being a no. So, um, I would entertain a motion to continue, um, this to a date certain and have the applicant, or, or rather, um, I don't wanna be presumptuous, um, the applicant also has the opportunity to, um, withdraw if they so choose. Um, but I imagine at this point, given that you're coming back your second time, you would r- rather appreciate it continuing to date certain. I see Attorney Burson shaking his head. Yeah, I'm okay. Um, so Ms. Williams, do we have a date before I entertain a motion for a vote?
Sure, you have available to you October ninth or October twenty-fifth. I'm sorry, twenty-third, October ninth or October twenty-third.
I, I, I would rather give you more time than less time. Um, so I would suggest you take the latter date. And so I would entertain a motion to continue this to a date certain of October twenty-third.
So moved.
Has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Has been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, do we wanna double check and make sure that's a date that will work for the applicant?
That's, that was my question as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Burson, Mr. Roberts?
I appreciate that. If that were, if it works for Attorney Burson, it works for me.
You're on mute, Attorney Burson.
I, I can make any day work, um, October twenty-third is fine.
Okay, thank you both. So it has been moved in second, um, we had a discussion, the date does work. Um, a vote occurs on the motion, Mrs. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. Offeld?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, sixty-five High Street, ZB F Y twenty-twenty six dash oh-three has been continued to October twenty-third. Again, I would highly recommend that you speak and get in touch with Ms. Williams. She takes very detailed notes, so she will have very detailed notes of everything that was discussed here, everything that's been asked for, what our concerns are. And rest assured that we will be looking to see if those concerns are addressed on October twenty-third.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. So, um, to that end, um, our next order of business are public comments um, for any matters not before the board tonight, and I do not believe, uh, Mrs. Williams, that we have anyone other than the last person that spoke.
Uh, no, not, we don't have anyone.
Thank you.
No one is here to comment.
And seeing that there are no public comments, then we will move to any business do we have that was not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours?
Um, I would just ask the members of the board to confirm that they are all available for the twenty-third of October.
That would have been helpful, yes.
Sorry, it just.
No, no.
Don't know when to jump in without talking over anyone, so it's, um.
I, I think we would have said something if we weren't, right?
I don't know. I don't want to assume. Is everyone available for the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure we cover our bases before we lose the applicant, so.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Williams. And thank you for availability. Okay, um.
Mr. Chair, I, I have a very minor item. I have a, a, an eye for this sort of thing, I think. Uh, on the project application report, the ZBA panel includes Steve Judge and does not include me, so. Honored to take Mr. Judge's place.
Thank you, Mr. Offeld.
Let me see, correct it.
Yes, I will correct that in the updated project application report moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, um, as we usually do, Ms. Williams, do we have a look ahead for calendar? I know we did that the last time, and there wasn't much, um, we anticipated, anything?
One moment, let me pull that up.
While she's doing that, Everel, where'd you get that cardigan?
I think it is Zara. But it is also arguably twelve to fourteen years old.
Well, looks good.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would say, um, I don't think they make them anymore.
Okay, can everyone see my second screen?
Right, you need to move High Street to the twenty-third.
Yes, yes, I was being presumptuous while everyone was speaking, so.
Yeah, I did too. I thought, I thought they might want it sooner to, uh, but I thought the chair's suggestion was very sound.
Yes, agreed. So this is now where we are. The meeting for the twenty-fifth of September has been canceled, so we will not meet on that date. Um, that leaves October ninth open. I don't think anyone's gonna make that date, so again, that's another open meeting date where we may not need to meet. And then the twenty-third, as we've now discussed, sixty-five High Street has been, um, how do you say, continued, thank you, continued to the twenty-third, so that's where we are. The twenty-fifth is canceled, the ninth is open, and sixty-five High Street is now on October twenty-third.
I, I know we had talked about, I believe you were trying to print copies of the bylaws, um, where, and there, I believe there's some changes being made, where are we with that? I don't know if we, if it made sense, if we have nothing on October ninth, if those were available. We could throw in an admin meeting on that date.
We could do that. I can check with the building commissioner since, um, they are the one who is sort of leading the charge, if you will, with that, and they would have more information than I would regarding uh, where they are with the printing of the new bylaw. So would you like the ninth to be an admin meeting?
Not, if it's, if the bylaws are not available, um, I don't want to schedule something um, because we're not gonna be able to vote to cancel it. Um, so maybe we should have an answer as to when it's gonna be available first before we schedule an admin meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, Mrs. Slovater?
I'm, I'm, this is asking a, a procedural question. Is there enough time remaining before the October ninth meeting for an applicant to get onto the October ninth meeting? No?
No, I'll share this other document with you, one second, um.
Because if, if there's not enough time, then almost by definition we can't meet on the ninth. Unless you want, you want to discuss bylaws.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, it's, Thursday used to be date night for me, but.
You have two now, you have two.
Well, I don't know, you haven't canceled the ninth yet.
Hold on, hold on, we gotta make date night happen for Mr. Slovater.
And now I'm gonna have to go make sure that she's still talking to me, so this is, but usually it works, yeah.
So crucial, we have to make sure this, this happens. Okay, hold on. So this is the schedule, if you can take a look at this really quickly, this is for the entire year. List the meeting dates, the application deadlines, and then legal ad deadline as well, and then uh, public notice. So for the ninth, applications would have had to be deemed complete by the eighth of September. And then legal ads would have had to go out, and, you know, for publication on the eighteenth and twenty-fifth. So basically, they've missed two big deadlines, the eighth and the tenth, um, which was this week. For the application submission deadline and then for submitting the legal ad, so no, no one's making the October ninth meeting.
Okay, so tonight we can vote to not have that meeting.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Shucks.
Oh, no, I thought you wanted date night.
That was an enormously sarcastic shucks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams. So I would entertain a motion to cancel our October ninth meeting. Um, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved in second, is there any discussion?
I'm there for something, I mean, wherever you need it, that's where I'm at.
Somebody's paying attention.
Um, the vote occurs on the motion, uh, Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. Offeld? Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So September twenty-fifth and October twen- and October ninth, we have no meetings, so we have a month off. Um, yeah, and we are back on October twenty-third with, um, sixty-five High Street. Um, at this time, I will entertain a motion to close tonight's meeting. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Has been moved, is there a second?
Go ahead, Philip.
Yeah.
I mean, I was, I didn't wanna click unmute again.
It has been moved in second, the motion is not debatable and just requires a roll call vote. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Offeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, thank you all for your service. We are adjourned.
Night, everyone. Enjoy your month.